Did you run?
Well, probably me or the, uh, all of us have me, uh, Amber City Council is ordered. And, uh, we will have. We'll call, Pledge of Allegiance, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing here. And I'd like to ask, uh, any royalty if they'd listen to Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Pledge of Allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation. With liberty and justice for all. Thank you ladies. We have a adoption of agenda, but before we adopt, hold on.
Ben Somer?
Yeah.
Fonson?
Here.
Ben Blarco?
Yep.
Elkin is gone, Blau?
Here.
Anna?
Yep. All right, all present and calling for, and before we adopt the agenda, I would like to move, uh, number three up to number one and one and two down appropriately.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda with those edits.
Second it, what was the edits switching to the three?
Switching three to one and then pushing the other.
Okay. All right, motion made in second to, uh, change the order of agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those. So ordered. All right, now. It has been a great pleasure to have the ladies that are, that are, uh, representing the city of Amory from the school district and the school themselves. Uh, would you like, when we, when we, when we, uh, and we start. Fourth princess. And lose yourself in this.
Hi, I'm Kelly Fern. I'm your twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, um, fourth princess. And I, I do track and field.
There you get something in there, you're welcome.
Hi, I'm Siri Yuhas. I am the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four second princess. I go to Amory schools.
And Siri's mom used to work for the city of Amory, so.
Hi, I'm Lily Casper. I'm the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four first princess. Um, many of you probably know my mom, she's Ramona Lockwood. She's worked at the school for many years. Um, I've grown up in Amory my whole life. And it's been a great honor this year.
Hi, my name is Lila Stone. Um, I'm your twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Miss Amory. Um, I have loved this, um, experience that I've had this past year, um, being Miss Amory, and I'm kind of sad that Fall Fest is coming up, even though it's such a wonderful time of year. Because I do have to give up my reign, but I do appreciate everything you guys have done for us. And I have enjoyed representing the Amory community. And I will continue to do so after my reign. And I just want to give a little, um, thing to our third princess and Miss Congeniality Anna Gould, who's not here tonight.
We have, we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Yeah. So, okay.
Would you guys, would you guys be able to get the proclamation to Anna and the little mess? They don't get lost.
You need to do this.
Yeah. Okay, we wanted to get, uh, get, uh, our ladies out. They spend lots and lots of time representing the city and the community. And so now we'll try and get back to some semblance of order. Uh, so we need the, uh, consent agenda items. Uh, City Council, July third, City Council, the twenty-fourth, Fire Committee, July one, Plan Commission, July eleventh. Plan Commission, July twenty-fifth, Personnel Committee, nine, June ninth. Finance, I didn't, that's not right, is it? That's, that shouldn't that be June, July ninth? Yeah, Finance Committee, July, July ninth, Safety, Public Safety, July ninth, and Recycling Committee. And that should be July fourth, I think. No? Was it, okay. All right. Uh, you have a chance to read them, they're in your packets. Any changes or corrections? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve consented agenda items as previously read.
Okay, motion made in second to, uh, approve the, uh, consent items as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those. So ordered. Now we'll get back in the, right, is there anyone here for public comments? No one's here for public comments. Going once, twice. Public comments are over. Department head reports, Clerk Treasure, we'll start with you.
All right, last month I attended my third year of the Clerk Treasures Institute. I've now completed my full clerk portion of the institute. I'll get my certification for that. Um, next year I'll have like a completion year of one year of treasure, and then I will be completely done with the institute. I learned a ton of great things from my classes. Unfortunately, the institute is fully virtual now, so you don't get so much of the one-on-one with the other clerks that you get at some of the conferences, but the presenters are really good at presenting and providing you with good information. They get actual lawyers to come and talk about agendas and things like that. So they have a lot of good people that actually do the presenting for these classes. Next Tuesday is our primary election, so in-person voting has already started. That's sort of last Tuesday. Tomorrow is our last day of in-person voting at the clerk's office. We actually have already done the nursing homes also, and we've tested our election equipment and everything is ready to go for next Tuesday's election. We'll set up our check-in station on Monday and download our poll books, and then we'll be good to go. This election is one of the elections where you have to select the party that you want to vote in. You can't cross vote between parties. So you actually select on the ballot what party you're choosing to vote in, and then there are two referendum questions on the ballot as well. On August fifteenth, the second quarter utility bills are due. The automatic payments for people that are signed up will fall on the twelfth, so it's a Saturday this month. Anybody that isn't signed up for automatic payment, just stop into City Hall or check out our website and you can get signed up for next quarter. It's too late for this quarter, but you can get signed up for future automatic payments. With the nice weather, it's been a very busy filming time. I've been out to actually a couple places where new homes are going to be built in the near future. One should be coming in pretty quick here, um, and the other one it'll be a little further out. Plus I have another one on my desk that'll be starting up also this fall. Going up. Eric will have neighbors. Um, and then I have been working on getting all of our banking accounts reconciled. So far, everything with the exception of one account was reconciled through the end of June. And I did start reconciling July for our general checking today to make sure everything is good to go there. Um, I've been providing, the auditors expect that the audit will be done roughly the end of August. They don't have a specific date in mind. Say for sure it'll be done then, but I've been sending up, sending over some of those final wrap-up things that they need in order to complete our audit. Any questions?
Thanks, Dylan.
Have the utility bills gone out yet?
Yeah, utilities bills went out three weeks ago, four weeks ago, sometime in July, early July, like a month ago almost.
Yeah. I was gonna say, I don't think I got anything recently anyway.
Month ago.
Okay. Okay, police chief, Dan. Thank you.
Yep.
Well, the first form I gave you is the DMV services. Uh, we have a pretty busy month. Like our busiest month so far to year to date. The next page, we had seventeen citations issued by the officers. And we had sixteen major incidents that required reports that were outside of our call for service. And then our call for service, we had four hundred and twenty different calls. Don't know that. The only thing that might not be correct in the citation, but I still believe it's wrong, the highway would be wrong, is if the one individual that we were writing citations to would have been gotten some of their class.
Uh, look at calls for services, ten forty-one, ten forty-two figured in those four hundred and twenty?
Yes.
Okay.
It's four twenty, is that an average or is that high? That's a little number.
Good. I think that might be because, um, Jimmy's spending a lot of time training with Sam, so the numbers are low. But. The guy's been to talk to about getting a little bit more activity and stuff. All right, so Officer Mahoney is in field training and progressing well. Uh, my hope is he'll be ready, um, beyond his own by the beginning, starting in September. Uh, he's already attended, um, toximeter training, so doesn't need. I'll tell you, I work, he can run it on the machine here. And then he's scheduled to go to the Reed Interview and Interrogation Class in September, which is a real good training for younger officers to learn how to do that. Uh, Officer Cole Stan. He's, um, at Northwest, or Northwest Technical College. Um, I talked with Tom Marson. And Tom is very impressed with how Cole is progressing there, so doing very well. He'll be, uh, coming soon. Um, and then Monday, I assigned Kyle Fenton to, uh, join us as an officer. He's also in the part-time academy with Cole.
Hmm.
Uh, Kyle Fenton spent six years in the Marines and then another year with the Minnesota National Guard. Um, when he was with the Marines, he was a uh, E five helicopter mechanic. I don't know the exact terminology there, the huge part. And then when he was with the National Guard, he was a Flight Operations Specialist. So he's in the part-time class, and I gotta give a thanks to Cole. Cole did a lot of speaking with uh, Kyle to get Kyle to come, you know, apply for us, so. Uh, they'll both graduate September twenty-ninth, September twenty-four. And with that, we will be finally fully staffed, two years in short staff, so pretty, pretty happy with that. Um, I wanted to say thank you to the city of Amory, main fire department for the credit to live fireworks. Um, I did not attend, but my officers that were there said that the traffic flowed very well afterwards from the area. Uh, we didn't really have any incidents during the fireworks, but we had a few incidents after the fireworks that were unrelated to the fireworks, so. Um, there hasn't been really too many, uh, big events this year or this month, uh, in the way of incidents. Um, traffic stops and citations have been increasing. Um, and we have been moving our speed trailers at different locations on request of this. Um, and then last night, we had National Night Out. We had a very large turnout. Um, I had a great time walking around, talking and meeting people. I actually met one of my neighbors from past when I was in the Bruce area. Her husband moved to the area here and she came to talk to me, so.
Hmm.
Uh, and then I want to thank, uh, Bethany, Heather and Rachel for doing all the ordering of all the stuff we gave out and the ice cream treats and all that. Uh, I also want to thank the Amory Fire Department for all the hot dogs and chips they gave out. The Amory Library for being there with their book bike. Um, the Amory Ambulance Service with their Freezy Pops and Carjackers for the music and bike giveaway that they did last night. Uh, it was a great night and I'm looking forward to next year. And finally, Heather's last day was last Friday. That's a rough day. Um, but, um, Rachel Wilson has taken her place and she has picked up stuff very quickly and she's actually made quite a few improvements already for us, especially in the computer area. She's so, so. So I got. Any questions?
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mitchell. What term chief, Mitchell?
All right, well, I don't have too much to say, maybe that Dan pretty much said a lot of it. So far to date, we are at three hundred and ten calls, and that was, yeah, three hundred and ten is it this morning? Um, we have a full roster. We have three new firefighters that are taking it to a level up in Apple River starting September, October. Um, so the fireworks, I think, as sitting there leading it, everything went good. Um, fireworks show I think was pretty good. We hit just over twenty minutes. I'm a lot of good comments there. Um, National Night Out, big success, a lot of people, and I want to thank everyone from the fire department. Yeah, on January eighteenth, fire department will be doing a big MASH cattle incident. We are gonna pick three different scenarios. Like, um, uh, active shooter either at the parade. We're gonna try to do three different ones where there's fire following the people. Um, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck, you're here, you could have done it yourself.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
So since we last met, the library has hosted twenty-five programs with five hundred and seventy-four people in attendance. Uh, our summer reading program just ended on Saturday. We had a field day in the park. It was a lot of fun. We drew the names for the prizes. Um, and a reminder that we take August off for story time so that we can get ready for fall and the school year. But Emma will still be in the maker space with crafts and activities, so we can still meet up and everyone's welcome. We bring their wills. Uh, we were happy to, again, attend National Night Out. It was a great night. There were hundreds of people there. Lot of fun. It's always great to be there and communicate. So we're glad that we get to come along. And we're still waiting on information on getting the HVAC system fixed so that the humidity levels are appropriate. Um, just under tonight, so I don't know where we are with that, but I know that someone came through recently and looked at some ideas. And then also we're waiting for information on when an electrician will come and work on hooking the correct things up to the generator so that we have a powered elevator that lights downstairs for a home shelter. Uh, we might have to close the library for part of a day or a whole day. Um, and we'll just, we'll just find out. I'll let you know. But I imagine we don't want to pay weekend rates for electricians. Uh, we are also, we were honored to host the ITLIS Library Board. Had their, uh, board meeting in July at our library, and it was nothing but compliments, and I was really proud of that. People were amazed at how beautiful our building was, how much we have for materials, how much programming happens, and just the amount of reach that a library in a town of three thousand has. So I think, I'm sure Fran, you could speak to that if you wanted to, but people were really impressed with our.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that Heather and the library staff did a great job hosting. There's nothing but good things and nothing but positive comments about how well the city of Amory was represented and how much they enjoyed, uh, meeting here and were, you know, uh, certainly impressed about the items that Heather was talking about. So, uh, hopefully again sometime.
That'd be great. It was a lot of fun. Uh, and the last two pieces are, I'm in my last week of a continuing education course at UW Madison. And that's been a lot of fun. I've really enjoyed being a student again. I think I'd be so proud if I could. And then I'll be gone in September from the eleventh through fifteenth. I'll be in Springfield, Massachusetts for an Association of Rural and Small Library Conference that I'm on scholarship to.
Cool.
It's great. We are working on putting together a video so that we share that on social media so people understand how to use it. But we've had our soft launch and then we're hoping to have some sort of ribbon cutting with you all, and maybe if you want to be in the video, be more than welcome to. Looking for known faces around town to operate the football court, so it'd be fun, but it's working really well.
Good.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you. Jeff called this afternoon about four thirty and said that it's his happy birthday, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, he had orders from the top of the Mahoney family that he was supposed to be in present, at presence at, uh, uh, Steak Boil, that's going on at his place, so he didn't invite any of us, but he said he wanted to be there and so on. Um, just, uh, I know we got a bid for the library electric.
Yeah.
Um, that.
He handed that to us at.
Yes, yeah.
So I just.
So that, that's to be, uh, to be decided, I guess, but we do have the bid for it. Um, anyone that's driven down Harriman knows it's been closed for a couple days. And, uh, probably will be, I, I don't, I don't know when they're gonna open it, but, uh, to replace that covert bump that we've had at Harriman and, uh, yeah, at Memorial Drive, so they're working on that. The sewer project, they got all the dirt moved. And pounding pilings, I guess, as we speak. And so that's, that's moving along. Uh, things are happening with it. Anyway, they're right on schedule according to Jeff, so. That was all he wanted to make sure if everybody knew, so.
What about the pickleball courts?
You know, I'm afraid of next week. Yeah, that's. Right after two inches of rain. Yeah, yeah. Um, well, you know, it's whatever. I guess they can't. Actually, I'm gonna start putting pressure on it.
It's good to see people at North, at the North Park. Court.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, you know, every time, every time they set a date, it gets pushed back for some reason or another, but, uh, um, Jeff told me yesterday that they're supposed to be here next week, so we'll see.
Right.
Um, that, by the way, that pickleball court after the blacktop is done, it has to set for twenty days minimum for the gases to come out of the blacktop so that it will accept the paint without, uh, without, you know, bubbling up and so on and so forth, so. I think probably a reasonable target date is probably pretty close to the first of October to be able to play pickleball. Which is only four months or so, five months more than we thought to start with, so. Okay, uh, let's see, we have April Zimmer, the blue lady.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, July was a very busy month, um, in various ways. I've been continuing to do grant writing for the city. Um, one of the grants that I have not applied for yet, but I've gotten the details on, is called the, um, Apex Accelerator Sprint. And it looks like it can possibly help bring people into the industrial park. So it's a grant that's available for industry moving into rural communities. Um, so that's something that I can get the information all gathered up, and that maybe we put online or hand out to people who are interested in the industrial park. Um, I have written that a grant for the Healthy Lifestyle Grant. Um, and what that can do is used in various ways. Um, I think it could help maybe with pickleball things. Um, it won't work on per equipment, but it will work for any of the clubs in town that include physical activity. So it could possibly also be with if we needed to redo the basketball courts or something of the tennis courts. Um, I have also been looking into the Community Building Grant. And that kind of goes hand in hand with another committee I'm on, which is the Rev Committee, which is trying to bring entrepreneurship and community to fill empty buildings. And so it looks like there are, um, various grant opportunities for small businesses that are willing to come to a downtown. And again, we can get that typed up and have that available for people who are looking, um, to start a business in Amory. I have not found any childcare building grants, but I have found multiple childcare programming grants. So once we get a little bit farther in that project, there's many grants available once you have the space, some that will even include the finishing touches inside of the space. We just need to be a little bit further in the process of that. Um, a lot of the grants that I'm finding, um, just so people know, some grant writing takes over forty hours just for one grant easily, just depending on the grant. Um, so some of these bigger grants, especially for the industrial park, will be quite time-consuming. Um, but if we have interested parties, I'm more than willing to sit down and work with them on those, on that process. I have been in touch with Lake Air Radio. They are the group, um, that has a station in River Place Mall. Their station from Madison came up through the end of June, and we did a live broadcast from Michael Burke. Uh, we're in talks about possibly being an hour-long weekly Amory tourism show. So that would be broadcast across the entire state of Wisconsin. Uh, I also last month helped out with cycling without age, uh, with Wanda Rimstet. So if you've seen the little tri-shaws that have gone through town, they're amazing, and Wanda did such a good job raising that money really quickly, and she put so much work into that. And so I was really happy to be, um, a part of that project. Uh, I've also, I never foresaw this, but I've had, um, business owners reaching out to me as well as civic groups. Um, just to have me come in and eat with them about what are some things that we could boost business or to boost our events? And so that's been really nice. I've had one meeting a week on that, um, approximately. And so we've really gotten some good brainstorming going, um, and there'll be, there will be details about, um, a harvest classic bowling tournament coming up in October where they would like to see a team made up of the city council. And it's also going to be a fundraiser for, uh, the. Um, also, you got, uh, the postcards that came in tiny. Also, we have pamphlets that are coming on the city of Amory that feature all of the businesses, and then they have little symbols by them, whether it's someplace to eat or drink, someplace to shop, or someplace to stay. And so it also lists our major events that happen throughout the year. And then lastly, I don't think there's anybody who doesn't know that Saturday is Amory's Price is Right. And so that's super exciting. And we changed it up a bit, and shopping will now start at four PM on Thursday. It gives a little boost to the bars and restaurants who don't open until later in the day on Fridays and Saturdays so that they still, um, get a good chunk of time to get customers in. So again, you get one card for every twenty dollars that you spend at the Amory Community Club Business. They have posters up in their front door that let you know that they're a participant. Um, and then at four o'clock at Michael Park on Saturday is when registration starts. The food trucks will be open, the beer tent will be open, and you will get your name tag and put in all your cards. I hope you, um, gotten a big stack of them throughout the three days. And then the show will start, and my good friend Mike here is gonna be a part of the show. And we have some other Amory celebrities that are going to be a part of the show, including our royalty that was here tonight. And I have to tell you, the prizes this year, I am blown away by. The generosity of our sponsors was amazing, and we are giving away thousands upon thousands of dollars in prizes and cash. Um, and we're doing this all because we want this to just be a yearly kickoff of the importance of shopping local.
Hmm.
Um, and so then after the show, it should be done about seven. We have a band taking the stage from seven to ten. They're called Double Down, and they're from Minnesota, and one of the members has a cabin on Wapakasid. And he attended Amory's Price is Right last year, and he loved it, and so now they're gonna play for us this year.
Cool.
Does anyone have any questions?
When does the game actually start?
The game starts at five fifteen. And I predict that it will take, we're a little more organized this year. And so I predict that it should be done by seven. The band will be set up ahead of time. So I was telling Sarah earlier today, I'm having nightmares that no one shows up on Saturday. It's like having a hit record and then your follow-up flops. So I I don't wanna be a one-hit wonder, but we start like vocal thing. I hope to see you all there on Saturday and remember shop, shop, shop leading up to that.
All right. Thank you much. Somehow I think we should get up and do that in a cheer now. Thanks for what you do, April. Okay. We are now down to community reports, finance.
So we're, we're hoping to, to work on the budget here now. Uh, in August and you know, you get that put together. And then the, probably the other, the other piece is um. I, I met with the, the bank uh with Brummer. And, and I just gotta follow up with a few other banks, but uh with managing our money. Looks really positive. Uh, right now, they're, they're offering on our excess funds. Of uh five point three two percent. Um, and, and what, in the, in the way it works is that it's. It's a sweep account, so all our money goes into this pool uh of banks, actually. And so we don't have to collateralize anything over two hundred and fifty thousand. We wouldn't have to. We need to vote on this on the sixteenth. Uh, there, but like I said, I gotta follow up with a few uh two other banks yet before I.
Tonight, it's on the agenda.
Uh, okay.
I don't think we have to move the institution that we're going through at this time, but. Uh, the concept of doing the.
In the interest of transparency, it's public money, public funds, that's public information. I think that we should talk about who it is.
And the man that he was talking to, so, so.
I've talked to all three banks and, and this. Right?
Would you save this all for item number seven on the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Uh, let's see, finance committee, was there anything else?
We did talk about and have a short presentation from um Adam Regal at Beard. Regarding um our proposed updates to our capital improvement plan. And we will be meeting with him before a September council meeting to, for the uh council to review those items. Ask questions and look at the draft he'll have prepared.
August twenty first at three thirty.
It's in August, okay. Sorry about that.
Okay. Thank you. Unless you have any more. All right, and personnel.
Um, so we've had two primary focuses um over the last month. Um, the first is that there are a couple of personnel-related policies that we're looking at making updates to. Um, as of last night, we've decided that the next step in that process is surveying our staff. So that we can get a better understanding of what they need and what they want. Um, and then we are also knee-deep in the city administrator process. So we're looking at the job description, making sure that that is as accurate as possible. And we are also looking at what we want the recruiting and hiring process to look like. It's looking at this point like our recommendation is probably going to be doing something similar to our last recruitment process with our police chief. Um, which was a very in-depth process to make sure that the person we hired was qualified and was a good fit for our community. So um, we are getting, I think, closer to recommendations for the full council so we can move forward. But we want to be really thoughtful in the decisions that we make and the process that we go through, so. Um, that's where we stand with all of that. I think those are the two main focuses of the committee right now.
Good. Who's the last chair over there?
Uh, for the public safety that, that we have, we uh with Dan, we went through a lot of different ordinances. That need to be updated or clarified. Uh, that was the biggest part of the meeting. We also talked about the. Uh, cost of vests uh and getting that clarified with the same pay for. And negotiations coming up as far as getting a group together to do that. Uh, those were the main. Items that we worked on this last week.
All right, I think that was the, the reports, committee reports. Um, so let's go to item four. C S M for parcel, so and so, seven oh eight Baker Terrace to separate the lot. Back into two parcels, lot one, lot two. Uh, this comes, uh, lastly was through. Planning Commission and they recommended that, that the city do that. Um, that parcel land at one time. Uh, was two parcels, was combined sometime later for a proposed use that didn't really materialize. And now they wanna combine it back into a single parcel. And uh, planning gave it their blessing, so. Okay, uh, if anybody else says, i- if you have any other questions, we entertain a motion, I guess. If you have questions.
On recommendation from the planning commission, I'll make motion to approve C S M for parcel two oh one dash zero zero eight six nine. Dash zero 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 seven oh eight, they are bigger terrorists.
Questions made and seconded to accept the planning commission's recommendation to separate the lot back in. At seven oh eight Baker Terrace, back into two parcels. Any further questions? All in favor, roll call.
Duncanson.
Hi.
Hi.
Thompson?
Yes.
Platom?
Yes.
Manor.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Number five, class A fermented malt beverage and class A liquor license for N I L nine. Uh, for folks that may or may not know. Uh, Mix Fresh Market was purchased by uh N I L nine Amory Enterprises. And this is just uh takes their class A licenses, which enables them to sell off premises. Uh, for fermented malt beverage and class A liquor, so. I don't know that we have to do anything else other than that. Yes, yeah, both, both parcels, so. Any other questions? Will you entertain a motion for that?
They make a motion, we approve the class A fermented malt beverage and class A liquor license and tobacco licenses. For N I L nine Amory Enterprises LLC. Uh, doing businesses six fresh market and N I L nine Amory Express Enterprises LLC. Doing businesses Amory Express.
I'll second.
Okay, motion will seconded to approve those licenses that have just been. Reentering the number. Any other questions? All in favor? Signify by saying I. Opposed, so ordered. Item number six, review discussion and potential approval of proposals submitted for garbage haul or R F P. I think they went, this went to recycling. Recycling have a recommendation? Speak to that.
Sure. Um, yeah, I'm on the recycling committee. So when we met, we discussed um the proposal that was received. Um, noting that there were uh a proposal, including recycling. Proposal that did not include recycling. And uh, the consensus of the committee without a motion made was to recommend the proposal that did include recycling.
So I have a follow-up question with that. Um, about a year ago. We discussed what it would look like to have recycling curbside pickup. And one of our big concerns was the number of people that would actually use it. If that's the type of contract we were to go with. So I'm curious if you've done any serving. I know at one point we talked about maybe mailing something out instead of seeing what the interest level would be. Did that happen?
Not anything else, but the way that the option one was recycling is worded down, we need the pricing, the recycling. It says as requested by residents, it will be up to the resident of it or not.
I know, um, just for some additional comments and maybe a quick update. So the recycling bins over by the fire hall are, are used a lot. And of course, um, they're, it can be used by anybody. It doesn't have to be a city resident. Um, I think there might even be a couple of businesses that use them. County tries to pick them up every day. Um, people out in the lakes, I think, come into town and use them as well. Um, uh, people, you know, um, sometimes feel like that they're full. So I would recommend maybe not going there on a Monday. Uh, after it's been filled um over the weekend. Personally, I haven't had that experience, but I know that other people have. Um, you know, as well, Polk County um will be having as part of their budgeting process. Removing the recycling center from the levee so that will become a enterprise fund, sustainable all on its own. Part of the reason for that is that they will be able to buy the equipment that Watermans are referring to in their proposal. And uh, if everything goes according to plan, that'll be twenty twenty six when that will be implemented. They are working now on updates uh to the buildings and facilities. And with the rain, they have been waiting for things to dry out like everybody else. So it is behind schedule. Um, but I uh. You know, I hear from a, a lot of folks, especially in the neighborhood that I live in and as a holder folks. It's hard for them to load up recycling and to take it down uh to where the bins are. And I think that it's good to have the option available for people who have trouble doing that. Um. And you know, people too, you know, we all forget and I certainly am guilty of it, is that recycling is the law. And we're all supposed to be doing it. So, um, you know, I think that this is good uh to have this availability. For uh the folks who can't go um down to the bins very easily. Or maybe they just like, anybody just likes the convenience of having stuff.
And so what is the cost factor involved?
Well, uh, per the proposal, what they're saying is it's eight dollars a month. So uh, this gets filled quarterly with the utility bills. So that would be an additional twenty four dollars a quarter if you would want to have curbside recycling.
And that, and that's on a requested basis, so.
Yes.
The cost is to the person that's doing the recycling.
It does melt in the specifically in the recycling proposal that uh. Our R F P requested that recycling go to Polk County Recycling Facility, but in here it states that. It happens, but the Polk County Recycling Facility's equipment is through its upgrade. So for now, they would take their stuff to another facility and tell Polk County stuff with their upgrade.
Which if, if the upgrade is going, if it is on time, would be done in twenty twenty six.
Projected twenty twenty six.
So at that point, we, this is usually a two-year contract, isn't it? So we'd be.
That's a five-year contract. So the proposal that we've received, it says this contract will be a five-year period. Beginning October first of twenty twenty four with a two-year renewal option at the end of the initial term. So this one would run until twenty twenty nine and then there would be the option for two years following that. And there would be a, the, these rates would be for twelve months. And then there would be. And both option one and option two read that. The only difference is option one.
Several conversations we had with um Mr. Waterman. He also offered that they could put an additional cardboard bin down by the county recycling bins. With that would help if the cardboard, the cardboard bins, the other ones that seem to be full quite frequently. So he has offered to put large um containers of some sort and then come through. They go through almost every day so they could pick them up as soon as they're full. Understood. That's just an offer that he made because of the, the times and it's full.
You'll see the issue I have with, with it and not, is not run, I mean, the rates are fine or whatever. Um, but just so folks know, anything you put in the boot bins goes to the county and they take care of it. And the county spends, you know, their money to pick them up and so on and so forth. The thing that Waterman's goes to, if we restrict them to going to Polk County Recycling. At present, I believe they have to pay a hundred dollars a ton for recycling that they take there. I'm not, I don't think that's necessarily so. I am in any place in Polk County. Wherever they pick it up, if they take it there, they have to pay a recycling fee. Which was, uh, as I understand it, cardboard is about the only thing that actually pays for itself. Um, you, plastics, number one, plastics are sort of on a break even basis. But uh, I think that's there real well. The rest of it is just kind of recycled to junk. Um. So. I don't, you know, I don't necessarily, it's not a problem for me to take it over the county, I, over the county bills. Um. If we have Waterman's be a cardboard thing, that would that require that it be on our own property. Rather than at that location. I'm not sure how that would affect the, the uh. Total amount of recycling that's done or, or maybe, maybe not. I don't know.
I'd have to talk to the county.
I don't think if we put a bin up, we have to talk to the county, do we?
That's wasn't what I was referring to. I was referring to Waterman.
Oh, yeah.
If Waterman's wants to put a bin on the county property.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 I, it would have to be on, on, other than county property, I'm sure of that. Um.
Well, I don't think it hurts to give people the option since the cost to us is the same regardless. So I think. I would make a motion to approve the proposed option one with recycling. With Waterman recycling and disposal.
I'd second that.
Questions made and seconded to approve the uh contract with Waterman Sanitation regarding. Both uh garbage pickup and recycling. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Duncanson.
Yes.
Ben Summern.
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Platom?
Yes.
Manor.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Okay, item number seven, investment opportunities for sewer funds.
How's your time?
Okay, thank you. I'm, I was just excited about it. It's um, you know, I think we can mention the bank. I, I, there's. So, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, so Brummer came back with, with a proposal on our excess funds. And, and it's, it's, um. It's a sweep account, which means, uh, any excess funds we have, like in our checking account. Gets swept into this account. And presently, they're paying five point three two percent interest, which. We're, we're talking over. Hundred thousand dollars a year of additional income to the city. Could be even more. Now, that rate is, is a floating rate. Based on the economy and, and basically, uh, if, you know, as a benchmark. Uh, there's, there's like a two percent spread in there. Uh, off of what the current borrowing rate is. And I know there's different borrowing rates and things, not, not necessarily residential, I think it's commercial. Um, and so right now that's about seven percent. So, so they're offering this, so if, if those rates go down two percent, then we're going to get two percent less or whatever. However, we do have a lot of excess funds. And, and some of it's TIF money and things like that, but we still, uh, can invest it and, and. So, um. I'm not, I guess I was, I was looking for the sixteenth just to make sure, uh, but.
So. This would just be, uh. We already have the funds in our checking account there, we already have a money market account there. All we would be doing is taking the funds out of our general checking account, putting them in our money market and implementing this sweep account. So our funds would sweep into the, this sweep account, we would get interest on those funds and whenever we needed them, like we pulled them back from the digital checking. So no funds are being moved from different institutions, we're not ending or starting any relationships, we're just using our funds in a different way.
Yeah, they, they require a ten thousand dollar minimum.
Will we explore other institutions to see what the interest rate would be?
The funds in another institution right now. That are separated from these funds, so Roger's working with that institution and he's been talking to another one also.
So, I've talked to both of them and the conversation has, uh, been around CDs, okay? What? And Bremer, what Bremer offered, uh, is this sweep account. And, and so I just want to make sure that these other banks. Have that opportunity, I don't even know if they have sweep accounts and things like that. But I just wanted to make sure, you know. The other banks are given opportunity. But by this, and that's where, by the sixteenth, that we, we can definitely make the decision. Twenty first.
It's team and next personnel meeting and, or finance meeting and that's what's in your brain.
Yeah.
I, just for the general public, I think, what's the interest rate we now?
Point five percent.
Seven five, so we're talking about in excess of a third percent increase on, uh. A lot of money.
There's no contract that I've. The sweep accounts would have to be signed up for, but it's not like a lock into this for like a certain amount of term, it's not like a CD that has your end. Right, six months, or if you pull out, you lose your interest. We make interest on what's in there and we don't make on what's not.
Yeah, that's, that's the advan, the advantage is, it's, it's totally liquid. So if we need money tomorrow, it's available, okay? The, the disadvantage is, the rate is, is floating.
So even with a floating rate, it's far in excess of what we're getting.
Based on our present funds, we're talking.
Yes.
Probably said.
Right.
And after. Funds swell substantially because we have, oh wait. Second, second half, yeah.
Yeah, so a lot of it's just timing of money and, and.
Easy for city employees, since these are checking account the way we've been using it. But have not all of our excess funds made little interest basically.
Yeah, so, so basically the checking, I don't know, keep it at zero. That's what I'm thinking. And, and just as, as checks come in to be drawn off. You sweep money into that cupboard.
So oftentimes, that's an automatic process by the bank, so I don't know, yeah, so I mean, it's not as though staff needs to do anything about that. Um, that's what I've experienced before, so I don't know, this.
So we leave our money market account at the ten thousand dollars that's required to be in there. But our checking account can't actually be tied to it, so we would still have to manually move on to that money market. So it would take some monitoring, but it should be.
Every time you, you pay bills, you, you know, that you need to sweep.
And the ACH automatic payments that go every month, that was gonna be, you know, accounted for and.
Yeah, it's not like. I probably wouldn't want to try and keep our checking account at. The bare minimum, I would still want to have excess funds in our checking account. It's something that comes through.
Would make sense.
At least in the time right now, while we're at the point that we're at, um. But there's still a significant amount of funds that should be able to go into our money market and then they use a. Operating along.
So to give you an idea, on a million dollars annually, that's a hundred. But, no, that's, uh.
Forty seven thousand, no? Forty seven thousand, right? Four and a half percent?
Oh, yeah.
Forty seven.
Five point three.
Well, more than, more than we're getting now.
Right, it's, it's, uh, fifty thousand.
Yeah, so.
That's great work, Roger.
Yeah.
I thought that wasn't thought of before, it's, it's.
You know, and, and this has evolved too. You know, the banks didn't have the ability to move funds around and things like that, the good part of it now. All of our money is insured by the FDIC would be.
Okay.
It would be by different banks kind of in, in the background.
And no more collateral agreement?
No more collateral agreement.
I can speak for the fire department on this one too, you know, that, our fire department retirement fund is. It's not really a retirement fund, it's kind of a length of service award. Or an amount of service reward has pre, there's been hampered by the fact that we got savings account. Rate on it, you know, when, when the stock market's been going crazy, we couldn't put those funds in any other. Vehicle that paid anything better than just, you know.
Yeah, so, so this rate is strictly tied to the, the con.
Yep.
I think I'll, I'll say, um. I, I know some people's perception when we're talking about this kind of money is that, oh. Why's the city got that much money and we're collecting too much in taxes, um, it's, it. Liking it to yourself and your personal checking account, and when you get paid and on payday, you have a lot of money. And then you spend it throughout, until the next payday, this is just money that has not been spent yet. It's all been allocated, it's just not been spent and it depends upon when the, um. Receipts come in for this, that, or the other thing, it's not as though we're overtaxing people. Um, it's excess money that is budgeted, that has been or will be spent. It just has to do with collection and when things are collected.
Right.
Yeah, our fund balance policy plays, plays a factor in that too, which, you know, recommended financial safeguard in place that we have. Like, you know, thirty or forty percent.
Right.
On hand at any given time, so.
So, without naming the institution that we may end up with. Are we in order to make a motion to?
We've already talked about it.
Proceed this, I, I know, but if Roger is going to be able to have a.
I know, what do you think? I, the answer is yes, yeah.
Are already there, so all you're doing is putting your funds in something that makes money.
Yeah.
Even who you're dealing with and talking to, Roger, that's not a secret.
Right, no, it's.
But, but do you need to, do you need to move with other institutions prior to?
Why don't we go ahead and vote and if we?
Have funds in other separate funds.
And, right, and I'm working on that, and if. You know, I think that's something we monitor and, and, and kind of check with banks on periodic. You know.
One of the things that Roger mentioned. Right in our prior meeting is that, uh, the reason this goes out to other banks is, you know, as repositories. On the sweep account is that FDIC. Ensures two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so if you have a million, technically you gotta put it in four different institutions to, to do that, so. All right, are you moving a motion as the?
I will make that motion.
Finance committee?
I'll second it.
Where are we, that back, Taylor?
Well, so Roger would like to make a motion to, um. Create a sweep account at, from our bank. To better utilize our funds that are there.
Motion's been made and seconded to do that. Is there any further discussion?
I do have one point, but let's vote on this.
We'll be able to do if you make your point after we can build on it.
It was just information.
Oh, all right. All right, um, and I think this deserves a roll call, so.
Duncanson.
Yes.
Ben Somrath.
Uh, yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Platinum.
Yes.
Manor.
Yes.
It is, I'm so passed.
So the second thing we talked to them about, that they weren't ready to do is, is have a line of credit. And, and the only reason we would have it is if interest rates really drop, but. But, um, CDs necessarily were a little bit better. Because CDs can sometimes be backed by real estate, things like that. So. And so the idea is then. That if you have CDs, you have terms and sometimes you need the money today. But the CD isn't due for another three weeks. So then you'd use short term money to make up that difference, and that CD would, would be able to get cash. So that's the other thing we had a discussion. Taylor was not as excited about that one, I.
It's not that I'm. I'd like to work a little slower and verify that.
For years, the city had a line of credit that they automatic, that they would renew every year. Uh, because there was a time when the city, um, needed to use that line of credit in order to pay the bills, because we weren't. Um, as financially in order as we are now. Uh, then as the city became, um, more financially healthy. That line of credit was no longer renewed every year. Um, we had sufficient fund balance and things where that wasn't something we needed to have.
It's a slippery slope, I, I think as long as we have the option of doing that, um. Personally, I think we should just kind of wait on that. Yeah.
Fun stuff.
City administrator position. Personality of. No more comments than.
Um.
Than you did already, your report.
I don't think so, other than we're getting very close to bringing the job description to the full council. Um, there's just a couple tweaks we might make because we surveyed our department heads and office staff to see what their expectations are. And I'm waiting to make sure that we give them enough time to fill out that survey. Uh, and then we will be making tweaks as we see fit. I'm bringing it for approval.
Thank you much, all right, uh, we're down to number nine, closed session, Wisconsin statute. Nineteen point eight five parent and one parent C interim city administrator. Considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employer over which. The governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Motion to go into closed session?
Make motion to go into closed session, whether nineteen eighty five, two one thirty.
All right, roll call.
Duncanson.
Why, yes.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
And Michael.
Yes.
Platinum.
Yes.
Manor.
Yes.
And I anticipate we will have, uh, action after closed session regarding this, so. If you're so inclined, you want to stay around, that's up to you, if not. Questions made and seconded that we. Hire Frank Pascual for the, for the interim administrator. I guess that's all we need to say. All in favor, no, we'll do a roll call for this too. This roll call night.
Hi.
Ben Somrath.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Platinum.
Yes.
Manor.
Yes.
Unanimously approved. Now we're in order, Michael.
Okay, I'm making motion to adjourn.
All right. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.